It's six oh three, so I'd like to, yes? I'd like to open the planning board meeting of October sixth, two thousand and fifteen. That's okay. I am opening the October sixth, two thousand and fifteen, meeting of the planning board. I need to announce that we are recording, audio recording for the minutes. LCAD is also recording. Is anyone else recording? If so, please state your name.
Person in the back.
No one is recording, so we're gonna jump right into business. We have a request for signage for Fado, six twenty-one North Main Street.
Are you going to even address it?
It's on our agenda. I think we should at least quickly address it unless you would like to go into it a little bit.
Uh, no, I just wanted to let the board know that the liquor license needs to reflect the new name of the business, as does an amended special permit. So the signage is premature.
So if, if everything worked out with the sign, we really couldn't approve it-
Correct.
-until the special permit was applied for anyways.
Special permit and liquor license.
And liquor license.
Right, mhm. And I listened to the meeting the, uh, this afternoon and Mr., oh my-
Yes.
Manny Coelho-
Yes.
-was advised that in order to change the name, he had to get an amendment to the special permit. And I've since talked to Lorraine and she said the liquor license is in his name and it needs to be changed.
I mean, would that, my suggestion would be that we table the matter until the special permit comes in front of us?
Mhm.
Everyone be in agreement?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, we're gonna move right on to the next one then. We have a request for waiver of site plan review and signage, um, Porele Waxing Salon, forty-four Harkness Ave.
I'm sorry, am I not seeing it all yet? It's hard to read.
Yes, it is, as I'm gonna demonstrate in a moment.
Yeah, P U R E L E. This one's a little bit easier for the sign. P U R, Purell Waxing?
Okay. Request for waiver of site plan review. Property owner is CFAG LLC, twenty-nine Stonegate, Wolverham, Mass. Phone numbers are listed here. Name of proposed business is Purell Waxing Salon Corporate Incorporated. Owner of business is, hmm. It's a handwriting issue.
Man. Elena-
Elena?
That's the other person.
Sekina?
Oh, wait a minute. Elena, here, Elena Sekina?
Close enough.
Elena Sekia?
Yeah.
There's another name here, too.
A Reglo-
Business owner's address is sixteen East Mason, Mansion Woods Drive, Agawam, Mass. Property address is forty-four Harkness Ave, East Long Metal. Proposed business is business district retail service. Allowed use is yes. Proposed hours of operation are Monday through Saturday, ten to seven. Number of employees are two. Summary of business operation is provides waxing services, eyebrow and tweeting.
Tweezing.
Tweezing. These are terms I'm not familiar with.
You can tweet about it, but-
Tell me about it. Uh, the application's been signed and dated September twenty-sixth, twenty fifteen.
Okay, um, that goes in a personal care-
Personal service shop.
Personal service shop, which isn't allowed use in that district.
Yes.
I would entertain a motion to approve the request.
Do we have a motion to approve a request?
Yes.
Yes.
Do I have a second?
Yes.
Have a motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? Yes. Could you just call them to get a correct spelling so that we can have it on the form?
Sure.
So that way there in the future, we'll actually know their names.
Sure.
Have a motion made and seconded. Further discussion? All those in favor signal by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Just to note for the audio, George Kingston is now a member. He's now joined us.
Yes, sorry about that. I got delayed by some renovations.
No problem at all. We have a request for waiver of site plan review.
Uh, sign for Purell.
Oh, we've got the sign also.
Yes, we do.
Um, sign permit application. Business name and address is Purell Waxing Salon, forty-four Harkness Ave, East Long Metal, Mass. The handwriting here is much better. Business owner's name and address is Elena Sek- Sekia, sixteen East Mansion Woods Drive, Agawam, Mass. Property owners and address is Argio De Jurelmo, twenty-nine-
Stonegate.
Stonegate Circle, Wolverham, Mass. Excellent. Phone number is listed here. Nearest intersection is North Main and Harkness Ave. Square foot of proposed sign is sixteen. It is single-faced. It is not freestanding. It is attached to the building. If attached to the building, does the sign project over pedestrian or vehicle away? Yes, about two feet. Setback from property line, two feet. Distance from nearest side yard line, seven feet. Distance from top of sign, blank, vertical. It is illuminated. It's a permanent sign. Total number of existing signs is zero. Total square foot of existing signs are zero. Total number proposed and existing signs is one. Square foot proposed and existing signs is sixteen. The application's been signed. The estimated cost is one thousand dollars. Sign affidavit is attached.
And it looks like the two-foot projection is just simply the cantilever of the building.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Not only that, but it's, it's, it's not two feet from the property line either.
Right, yeah.
I wasn't sure if the building was, which is allowed in business, right? For side yard setback?
Oh, side yard, no, that's the front.
Yeah, side yard setback is seven feet.
Well-
Seven, okay.
Says seven here.
Yeah, I, I think that their measurements to this, to the property line are a little-
They might be sidewalk measuring.
I think so, yeah.
Or pedestrian right-of-way measuring for their entrance.
I would entertain a motion to approve the sign as submitted.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Now we can go on to the request for waiver of site plan review. Cashmere Sale, thirty-five Harkness Ave.
Uh, request for waiver of site plan review. Carl Porella, thirty-seven Harkness Ave. Phone numbers are listed here. Near proposed business is Cashmere Sale. Owner of business is Janice Lottel. Business owner's address is ninety-six Bel Air Drive, Long Metal, Mass. Property address is thirty-five Harkness Ave. Uh, property district, uh, district is business. It isn't allowed use. Proposed hours of operation are Monday through Friday, ten to five. Sunday, eleven to four. Number of employees are three. Summary of business is clothing and accessories, men's and women's, all cashmere. The application has been signed and dated September twenty-ninth, twenty fifteen.
Silver behind big Y.
Yeah. Is this the same business that was down here in Indianapolis?
Oh, okay. They were there for a very short period of time, closed, and now they reopened in a new spot.
Reappeared.
If I understand correctly, they're, it's basically three or four months until the holidays or until their inventory's gone. It's an allowed use. Make a motion to approve?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We have a request for waiver of site plan review. LLP, North Main, LLC, sixty-one North Main Street.
And I will note that this one is typed and will be much easier to read. Request for waiver of site plan review. Property owner is LLP, North Main Street LLC. Owner's address is ninety-four Maple Street, Suite One, East Long Metal, Mass. Phone numbers are listed here. Name of proposed business is LLP, North Main LLC. Owner of business is William LaPlante. Business owner's address is ninety-four Maple Street, East Long Metal, Mass. Property address is sixty-one North Main Street. Property is, uh, district is commercial. It isn't allowed use. Date of last parking plan with copy of the same as site plan decision, April seventh, twenty fifteen. Summary of business operation is bank and professional offices. The application has been signed and dated September thirtieth, twenty fifteen.
The request is on the second sheet here. What they're looking to do.
I am requesting a waiver of site plan review for an alteration to the previous approved site plan decision dated April seventh, twenty fifteen. Project located sixty-one North Main Street and requesting the addition of an eight-foot tall vinyl privacy fence located as shown in the attached plan. Privacy fence provide an additional buffer between the residential butters and my commercial property. The possible addition of the fence was discussed at a public hearing in response to a neighbor's concern with headlights from cars using the drive-through teller after dusk. The privacy fence will certainly ren- ren- remedy this concern and will enhance our neighbor's properties by maintaining the residential feel of their rear yards without the visual impact of the abutting commercial development. I have enclosed a photo of a similar fence for your review. In addition, I am seeking permission to install three residential-looking post lights as shown on the attached plan. The addition of three lights will improve the site lighting without having adverse effect on the residential neighbor, residential neighbors. The lighting of the building, as approved in the site plan decision, may create some poorly lit areas on site. By adding three post lights, you'll be able to provide additional lighting for the safety of customers and tenants. I have enclosed pictures and photometrics of the proposed fixtures. These fixtures are designed for localized lighting and will not extend beyond the property bounds. Respectfully, William LaPlante. Here is a photograph of the fence. Here is a photograph of the residential-looking post lights. Here is the post. Uh, one, two.
There's three of them.
Three.
We have two, one up here. One in the back. I like the idea of the fence. During the site plan review, that was one of our concerns, was headlights going through, um, basically shining into the neighbor's yard. And by adding the eight-foot tall fence, uh, it's five feet off of the property line, I think it's great.
I do, too.
I did have, um, some concerns as far as the lights up in the front. I was thinking they were gonna be taller, but being basically a residential standing light, which is about eight foot tall. I think they'll look wonderful there. My only concern is if they do, I mean, I know they're not supposed to spill over into the neighbors, but it looks like one side could be blacked out if it was necessary. I think that would be something just to put in there that if there is a problem with them, we could ask them to black out one side if it causes any problems.
Especially in the rear, the rear corridor of the building for safety concerns.
Yeah, yeah, the only light I'd be concerned about really would be the one in the back because he's got businesses on either side otherwise and front. And if that back one is a problem for people because they can see it all night long, you could put a shade on the back of it.
Yep.
You'd never see it.
It's just nice to have that option.
Yeah. I mean, there's a long distance from that back-
Yeah.
-that point to the back property line.
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
Any further discussion? Tied? Good with everything?
I'm good.
Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Oh, Michael's not gonna be yelling, is he?
Okay, um, we're gonna go under administrative issues. Further discussion on Fenway Lane? If I remember properly, the DPW is looking for us to, um- endorse the taking of the street. Do we need to read anything further into the record, Robin?
If you wanna read the letter from Bob, I'm not sure.
That would be great.
Just give Ty a minute?
Yep.
I'm not used to, used to using when it's so hearty.
As long as it's not your shirt.
Well, you don't have to worry about that either. Okay, um, memo from Bob Parent, um, from DPW regarding Fenway Lane, street taking dated September twenty-fourth, twenty fifteen, to Robin McDonald. I'm writing in response to your request for a letter confirming the DPW's position on the status and proposed taking of Fenway Lane at the upcoming fall twenty-fifteen town meeting. In my September twenty-second, twenty-fourteen memorandum to you, is recommended that the planning board take the remaining cash bond for the project so that the DPW could correct the remaining deficiencies that exist at the location with our own forces once the project was approved for acceptance by, by town meeting. The cash bond was to be used to cover outside expenses for the corrective work. It is my understanding that the planning board agreed with this recommendation and took action to take the developer's bond. With the recent completion of the microservices work for Fenway Lane, the cash bond balance has been expended and our concerns regarding the roadway have been addressed. The microservicing has restored the condition and useful life of the existing pavement to what we, we would expect to see for a roadway that was constructed more than eight years ago. Now that this pavement preservation work has been completed, the Board of Public Works has submitted an article for the upcoming special town meeting requesting acceptance of Fenway Lane as a town way. This will allow the DPW to proceed with the balance of the corrective work on the street as outlined in our September twenty-second, twenty-fourteen memorandum. We hereby request the planning board's support of this, um, street taking article as this action was an integral part of the DPW's recommendation that was acted on by the planning board. Please let me know if you have any questions. Let me know if you have any questions. That's it.
Let's start. Well, do you want, do you want a motion first so we can discuss?
Yes.
Okay, so I'll, I'll make a motion to, um, to endorse the acceptance of the street.
Recommend.
Recommend.
Is there a second on the motion? I will second the motion for further discussion. Now we can start further discussion. Deb?
So when we were just talking la- last time about taking over the street- A lot of that letter just speaks about the paving. What about the rest of, is everything else been accountable? Done sidewalks, lights, sewer, everything else?
Sidewalks, yes. Lights, yes. Sewer, yes.
So everything's up to-
So there's, to add to Deborah's question, so there's nothing that needs to be done in this road in any way, shape, or form that would prevent it from being acceptable to town standards for the town to take? And what raises, I'll tell you what raises the concern. The raises, what raises a concern is that there was a bond, um, and then through the course of history, almost a hundred thousand of it was taking, taken out of the bond. So either the bond was an incorrect amount, too high by a hundred thousand, or there was a hundred thousand dollars worth of work that wasn't done so that a hundred thousand of the ba-, roughly a hundred thousand dollars of the bond could be removed without compromising the road.
Right. The bond that was taken on this specific subdivision was the, was the proper amount that was necessary in order to finish the subdivision roadway. We ran into an issue when the IRS showed up at the planning board office with a levy. And I turned it over to Jim Donahue. They wanted all the money that the town had in, in escrow for this, for whatever the reason was. It was IRS. Jim Donahue negotiated and I think it was thirty-two thousand dollars went to the IRS to pay for this levy. DPW did give us a reduction figure of eighty, I think it was eighty-four thousand. Could be, you know, don't hold me to that, eighty-one, eighty-four thousand. I sent the, it was approved by the planning board because it was recommended by the DPW. I sent that down to the clerk's office, who called me and said that back taxes were due and they were going to take that eighty-four thousand dollars as back taxes. This was out of the bond and that's what they did. Town clerk took the eighty-four thousand that was approved for reduction out of that bond and paid back taxes. Hence, we had almost nine thousand dollars left. Now, according to Mr. Parent, the roadway is acceptable and, you know, and I do know that if you go up and look, it, it's, it's in much better condition than it was. Are there a couple of little things? Probably, but the lights are in, the sewer's in, the water's in, the sidewalks are in. The road has been, I'm not sure, resurfaced, what is that?
Micro, micro-surfacing.
Right, uh-huh, and then repaved. And it is in the condition that a road that would be eight years old would look like right now.
Actually, I think it looks better than a road that's eight years old.
Yes, I do, I do as well.
I did jive down it. I did look at the development, being that, like I said, it's roughly eight years old. Were there a few little things here and there? Absolutely, but, um, what, what my consideration was is the DPW said in their report back in April, it would cost about nine thousand dollars to bring it up to standards. We went ahead and took, uh, the remaining bond money, which was roughly nine thousand dollars. So based on their numbers, whatever was done should bring it up to standards and they're now telling us that it has been, so.
All right, I'm, I'm, you know, if that's the case, I'm fine with that, but I just, it just sounds pretty odd that a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars comes out of the bond and none of that was needed to finish anything.
My, my concern, I mean, that's because the developer did do a bunch of work, okay?
Yeah, I understand.
Which would offset some of that-
Eighty-four thousand dollars.
Bond. But my, my only concern is the sentence in his letter, which says, "We can use our own resources to complete." I'm not sure what he's talking about, his own resources to complete.
Their own resources would be chapter ninety money, but it has to be approved, it has to be accepted at town meeting first.
I understand that, but he says we can use that to complete it, which indicates that he thinks it's not complete.
Um, well, you-
Yeah, I, I mean, I looked it over, like I said, I, I'm not a DPW person. I mean, my thought would be that there's probably a crack in a sidewalk or something like that that may need to be addressed, but-
But at the same time, is, that's acceptable for an eight-year-old development.
Yeah.
You know, frost heaves, things move.
Really, we don't, we don't have, you know, and if you're talking about taking the developer to court, we're talking a lot of money.
Oh, I understand that. Very small.
I mean, we don't have, it, it's unfortunate, but I, I don't think there's really-
And there are five or six taxpaying citizens on that street.
Sure.
Yes.
So I, I can't say I'm happy with it, but I, I would, I would agree with recommending it.
And I think that you won't find this situation anymore.
Hope not.
No, I would agree.
Given, given the way, the change-
The inspections that I've seen being done are very meticulous.
The change of tide or, you know, whatever you wanna say. Not you, Ty, but-
I know, Jimmy.
You know, um-
T I D.
Yeah, I, I really don't believe that you're going to see any of this.
Okay.
Any further discussion? Have a motion made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, you may have to stand up at town meeting because it, it went through the, um, the printing of the warrant with no recommendation.
That's fine. It's Fenway Lane. We have one more. Request for contract extension, Rustic Meadows.
To the planning board of East Long Metal from CNM Builders Inc., LLC, Silver Fox Lane, East Long Metal, Mass. Dear Robin and board members, CNM Builders requesting an extension on the completion of Silver Fox Lane until October thirtieth, twenty sixteen, which is a year from now. Thank you, Carmine Kapua, CNM Builders LLC.
That's off Hampton Road.
Yeah, I know, I know the one. Is this their first extension?
No.
Okay.
I think this is-
Didn't they have one before?
This is, I think, the third extension. What this was is an ovation. This Stevens or Goreffi, which one is it? We had two of them. Goreffi. This was Goreffi. And, uh, CNM Builders took that over. An ovation is just to take over the entire, all of the debt, the subdivision, the plan, the, the approvals and all that. And he had requested, um, money from the, to reduce the bond and wasn't happy with the figure. The figure was a hundred and four thousand, five hundred and sixty-eight dollars from the new sheriff in DPW. So Mr. Kapua would prefer to do more work on the subdivision rather than have to put up a cash bond in that amount in order to meet the requirements for the town.
But they are making progress on that.
They are.
They are.
He just wants to continue to do some more work-
Right.
And his contract runs out November fifteenth, so I told him he would, because you can't renew the contract once it's expired, so he's looking for another year.
Well, how long's it gonna take to do this work?
It probably won't be a year.
Well, then why?
Would better safe than, I mean, I would rather extend it for a year in case we have a super harsh winter or something else happens.
I was thinking the same thing. I think the timeframe makes sense.
Yeah, when, when, once the-
Just in case.
Once the asphalt plants close, you can't do much.
Right, there's only paving for another month.
Right, and normally we extend the contracts for two years, so I just limited this to a year.
Well, how much of an extension has he already gotten?
Was, wasn't that before he took it over? Because the work has really just kicked in.
In the last two months, I'd say.
I'd say four years, but when, when the Goreffis had it, um, that's when the economy really tanked and we had a lot of subdivision and a lot of contractors come in and ask for, for extensions. So they received an extension, then they moved out to Utah and that's when they sold the properties. And then by that time, the contract was almost up when CNM Builders purchased it, so they had to get an extension for that in order to come, to even begin to work. And this is his second.
Let's just get this stuff done.
I make a motion to approve the request.
I second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, we already had a motion and a second.
Okay, well, there we go.
Get another one.
Would you like us to vote on that?
It's locked in, Robin.
Really wanna die.
That's okay, yes. I have, um, before you get to the minutes, we have Doggy Works that was granted a special permit for one seventy-four North Main Street. And the only reason that I'm bringing this to you is because she has insisted that it be brought to the board. She wants to move to one seventy-eight North Main Street, which is two doors down where Passionate Pear was. However, it's under a special permit. Any other special permit that moves to a new location needs an amendment to their special permit.
Right.
She would like to do this without an amendment to her special permit.
Doesn't it need a new special permit? Because a special permit goes with the facility-
At the location.
The location.
Correct.
And I believe, if I remember right, this came up with the cupcake lady-
Yes, it did.
Moving on Shaker Road down further.
Yes, it did.
And we also made her get a new special permit.
Yes.
The rules are in place for a reason.
Yeah, I agree.
Exactly. Regardless of whether it's two doors down-
One door down.
Or three streets down.
Or one story up, yeah.
Absolutely, yeah. Okay, I just, that's what I had said, but, all right. Okay, and then the minutes of September eighth.
Can you have Ralph's corrections on those?
Yes, we do.
Okay.
Then we're probably good to go.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of September eighth.
Is there a second?
I second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed.
Michael's not here.
Okay.
I would just like to take a minute. This board appointed me to run the open space and rep committee with regards to updating our open space and rep plan. I just wanted to give everyone an update. We have been meeting monthly. We're into just finalizing a survey for the town to get some input back from the town as far as what type of facilities they'd like to see, what they think of our existing open space, if they think we need more. I think it's progressing very nicely and I'm hoping sometime early next year to have the update ready to be presented to, I believe we have to present it to the Board of Selectmen.
Yeah.
And, uh, so it's going along very good. George, you're on the committee?
Yeah.
And any thoughts on it?
We're making good progress, I think. It, it's not gonna be real difficult to do. We do need to coordinate- We do need to coordinate, obviously, with the Brown Forum Committee on what they're looking at there.
Yep.
And, uh, you're on that, right?
Yes.
So we have good coordination there and, uh, we'll see where we go.
Anyone have anything else?
I'm meeting with Diane either tomorrow or Thursday to start updating some of the statistical information.
Great.
So hopefully that'll be taken care of. Dan, this is off the, if I may. Hazard mitigation, I've been appointed to that committee.
Good.
Um, Dan Helyer should be calling you. We need some information on wetlands and beaver dams and things like that and.
I had volunteered to be on the committee, but I guess he didn't want me.
I, I had no clue that I was even, until I received an email saying.
Congratulations.
He's not gonna inspect all beaver dams.
Congratulations.
But, um, I'm.
Make sure to fix it up.
I'm just concerned that the, the right information be brought.
They're amazing animals, side note.
They are.
They really are.
But when they build it in your front yard, you got a problem.
There is a problem though.
They're amazing animals when they're someplace else.
Well, they're, yeah, they're, they're probably a good two blocks away from you, so it's nice to walk and see what they do.
As long as they're upstream, it's fine.
Yes.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.